Good evening. The Jackson Public School Board meeting is now called to order. Board members, we have six members present. We have Ms. Hilliard and Dr. Hairston on the phone. Mrs. Johnson will not be here tonight, therefore, we have a quorum. We have all had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Mr. Figures is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Next, we have all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the May 2nd, 2023 regular board meeting minutes?
I can move.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Now, onto the superintendent's report. Dr. Green.
Thank you. Dr. Sebag to all of our board members, our team members, our community, and parent, and scholar, and team members who've joined us here or will watch this live stream. We'll begin, as we typically do, with some video highlights from our instructional television
JPS High School scholars and Superintendent Dr. Eric L. Green received a big send-off at the Jackson Evers International Airport as they embarked on a trip to Lagos, Nigeria.
And I want to kind of connect the culture in Africa to the culture that we have here in America and see how it was different and how it was similar.
There, our scholars transcended language and cultural barriers, shared core values, and built relationships with students across the globe.
The history, the culture, and all those things that make Jackson, Jackson, Mississippi, Mississippi. And then to connect them intentionally with some young people in other places. They've already been to Baltimore to visit some scholars there.
And we're thrilled to share that JPS teachers and schools were awarded sizable checks thanks to the generosity of Kiesler Federal Credit Union.
You each get $2,500 for yourself to use any way you see fit, and your schools.
This award recognizes the significant and lasting impact our teachers and schools have made on their students, inspiring them to be extraordinary.
She said, "That's not enough because I know this student could have been better. I know this student could have been better." That's excellence across the board, not just excellence with academics, excellence with behavior and how young ladies should care themselves and how young men should care themselves, holding them all to the highest standard.
We are grateful for the support of our community partners in helping us fulfill our mission to provide excellence in education for all of our scholars.
Thank you to everyone for joining us for our 2324 registration giveaway.
We are excited to announce the winners of our raffle for parents and schools who pre-registered for the 2023-24 school year. Since April, parents have been actively enrolling their JPS scholars, and those who pre-registered early were entered into a raffle for some amazing prizes. We appreciate the early participation and look forward to another successful school year.
Looking for a job? You're invited to Cardozo Middle School on May 20th from 9:00 a.m. till noon for the 2023 Spring Hiring Blitz. This is your opportunity to learn about the many positions available at JPS like campus enforcement, child nutrition, transportation, maintenance, teachers, teacher assistants, and support staff. Applicants for teachers bring copies of your resume and teaching certificate. For more information, call 601-985-3159 or visit our website.
For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, on Twitter at JPS District, Comcast channels 18 and 19, and YouTube at youtube.com/JPSITV.
I want to say thank you, as always, to our team for compiling those highlights from all of these events and activities throughout the district over the past few weeks. There's so much going on in Jackson Public Schools, so much going on. And thankfully, I've been able to engage with many of our team members and scholars in many of those programs. Board members, we will come back at a future date with the scholars who were featured there, who were able to participate in our Global Citizenship Project. And I just want to tell you, I'm still riding high from that experience with them. Our amazing scholars were such wonderful ambassadors for Jackson Public Schools, for their families and communities, but also for the state of Mississippi and for this country, and engaged very respectfully, graciously, and with open eyes and open arms and hearts. And so, I can't say enough of how they represented us well, and I know that these experiences will likely stick with them throughout the rest of their lives, and we're certainly hoping so and working to that end. But we'll come back soon with their reflections and once I think we've had an opportunity to really sift through all that they experienced. Some more on that. Because I don't want to forget it later, I want to say now, can you believe that next week we'll close this school year? Somebody out there, please, somebody. Maybe some other people want a few more weeks. I don't know. I was, I did a little pop-up visit at Lake Elementary School today, and I happen to say, which I, what I typically say to folks about this time, "Hey, is anybody counting down?" And they looked at me like, "Sir, please don't play with me. Of course, we're counting down. It's a countdown. It's that time." But I do want to say, as we approach, quickly approach, the end of this school year, kudos and congratulations and thank you to all of our JPS team members, and especially to our teachers, and of course, to our students for a suc-, but we know will be a successful year, what we've seen already as a successful year, and to all of our scholars for completing their state assessments. I know folks get all riled up and stressed and anxious about the assessments, but I'm just very pleased that we were able to move through that process pretty seamlessly. I know it took tons of work by our team members, but I do want to acknowledge that we've been able to move through that and will be excited to share the results of those assessments. All right, moving on. Board members, as you know, several of our schools will undergo some pretty urgent and necessary repairs during the 20, well, over the summer and into the next school year, 2324 school year. As a result, three of our schools will be relocated for the, for the entire school year. Our team has already begun providing some opportunities for those families and scholars to engage with their receiving school communities. And we've seen some pictures and some testimonials and lots of smiles and things and whatnot posted on our social media and that, just evidence of some of that engagement. At this time, I'm going to invite Dr. Michael Cormack, our Deputy Superintendent, to join us and provide just a little more information regarding those engagement opportunities for parents and for scholars. Dr. Cormack?
Good evening, Dr. Green, Boarder Trustees, our JPS team and family. I'm excited to provide a few updates on our community engagement related to school construction, relocations, and consolidations. We have some accompanying slides, but let me go ahead and dive in. So, we've had a number of community engagement, open house events at our schools that will be consolidating. Johnson Elementary, Shirley Elementary, there was an event to mark their consolidation with Baker, Lake Elementary, Lester Elementary, at Marshall, and then also engagements at Powell Middle School. Each of our Assistant Superintendents have been conducting these meetings and sharing with families. We're very excited about the community atmosphere and the sense of unity and camaraderie that has been built so far. As you see pictured here at Johnson Elementary, Mrs. Woody and members of Team Johnson, as well as Pecan Park, we've had an exceptional turnout from our English learner families, and we believe this community engagement has been really important as they seek to, to find new homes in schools and make certain that they have a strong start. I also want to acknowledge our English learner supports, Mrs. Tiffany Fuller, they've had interpreter service at each of the events, just to make certain that those scholars are well-supported. As well, our central office team has been engaged in support for the transitions at these schools. We utilize a software platform called Teamwork Projects, and so internally, within the district, we're also coordinating much of this work, which includes placement for our classified team members, communications and flyers for these engagements, the development of new routes for schools, as well as logistic supports inclusive of boxes for each of our schools, external moving support bids that have been developed, and registration events to ensure that many more of our scholars are registered prior to the end of this school year. Launching today is a multi-child family survey. So, Dr. Green, at our last board meeting, made a commitment to ensure that in response to family concerns about potentially splitting our elementary scholars between receiving schools, K-2 and 3-5, or some other scholars, we are, have looked at the data at each school and have supported the transition and parents selecting an option. So, that multi-child family survey went out today. It will be open for a week, and we'll have a big push out through school status daily. Our public engagement team is engaged in that work, and so, we will be pushing that out. The only thing that parents will need in order to complete the survey is the IMCS number of their oldest child and their oldest child attending elementary school at that school. That will allow them to unlock the family, and that'll be the surest way. We call that IMCS number, the lunch number. So, if, in case they don't know what the IMCS number is, the translation is the lunch number, and the kids know their lunch numbers like the back of their hand as they go through each day to get meals. An additional piece from Dr. Green was our special school application. We heard, and in response to feedback from families at both Isabel and Pecan Park, we have reopened that application for special school enrollment as well. That application was open, and decisions will be emailed to families this Friday with parent acknowledgements due back by May 24th of next week. So, in response to those commitments, we have lifted those, and so, in our next iteration, we'll continue to promote our registration events so vital that we have that information in students registered, so that the transportation routes can be developed, so that those can be shared with families in a timely way. As well, we'll continue to support faculty members with classroom setup time and activities to integrate new school staff. So, in conversation with Miss Woody this afternoon even, she is allowing release time, and Dr. Greensby, we're allowing release time for Pecan Park team members to go to Lake and to Johnson to begin that moving process within those final, within next week, the final week of school. We'll also provide collaboration within Team JPS. We have a structure called Opening with Excellence. This is an ongoing structure to ensure that we start school strong, but we'll be utilizing a special relocation and school construction project to continue to lift that work so that we are able to lift this work with excellence. So, those conclude the updates.
Thank you, Dr. Cormack. Actually, wanted to see if there are any questions regarding the engagements with families and the continued efforts around these temporary relocations while we have Dr. Cormack at the mic. Any questions about any of that?
I would just ask, how was the attendance at the open houses?
So, there was variation from anywhere from 15 to upwards to 30 and 40. So, there was some variation, not comparable to some of the events that were held announcing some of the changes and engagement.
And is, so, based on where you're sitting, what are your thoughts on next steps? Is that good enough? Do we need to do more? What's, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, so, there's ongoing work. These open houses were initial ones to address any anxiety or concerns that we prioritize having them before the end of the year. There will be continued summer engagement as we integrate school communities, and we'll invite parents back once the buildings have been thoroughly, you know, cleaned and reoriented and set up. So, there will be some summer work and engagement. Right now, the big priority, and Dr. Green will speak to this in a bit, is registration. And so, as that happens, that allows us to unlock other possibilities, but we are specifically thinking about plans to integrate school communities over the summer and further engagement work and specific work around the critical need to register all scholars.
Great, thank you. Thank you again, Dr. Cormack. Appreciate that. And as, excuse me, picking up on that, that point about registration and enrollment, the school year 2324 registration process, Board members, it launched April the 17th, as you probably know, and I'm pleased to report that as of May 15th, we have 5,108 submitted registrations, including 94 new pre-K scholars. By comparison, Board members, we only had 1,372 scholars registered by the end of the school year last year.
That's pretty good.
So, we're more than halfway, so, that's great in and of itself, but we're more than halfway to our goal of 50% registrations completed by the time we end the school year. And so, we're pretty excited about that. And to help us to operationalize our district goal of 50%, having 50% of our scholars registered by the end of the school year, each JPS school established a goal based on last year's data. The following schools have already reached their individual goals for the end of this school year, and that's Obama Magnet, Casey Elementary School, McWilli Elementary School, GN Smith, Clausill Elementary, Dawson Elementary, Key &amp; Raines Elementary. Let's give them a round of applause for... Thank you. This seems like such a simple thing, but it's been a challenge for us for many, many years, and so, I'm really excited to see this moving and that we've set a goal that's a bit of a stretch from where we've been, and we're well on our way to reaching that. As mentioned in the, the highlights video, we held a raffle on May 4th to help to incentivize our schools and parents to get registered. Six scholars won prizes that included televisions, headphones and earphones, and Fitbits. Our next raffle, we will do another one. The next one will be held on the 24th. And so, all families that have completed registration by noon of May 24th will have an opportunity to win prizes in this second registration, JPS registration giveaway. That's excluding those previous winners. So, parents, any parents who might be listening, or any parents in the audience, if there are any parents in the audience who perhaps have not registered already, you still have an opportunity to be included in that next raffle, and we're just excited to do this. I should note that those prizes, those incentives, were made possible through private donations. I want to continue to say that they were made possible through private donations. There are not any public dollars used for those. And we're just excited that folks are, are taking advantage of this opportunity and getting their scholars registered. Board members, as I've indicated previously in, in previous meetings and even in Finance Committee meetings, we are developing a proposal for a potential pay increase for our classified team members, which would complement the recent increases that were provided to teachers and to school leaders. And you'll recall that we've done that, and we're excited about those. We want to do the same for our classified and central office team members. They've already received at-rule employment letters and the certified staff contracts for the 2324 school year. We issued those because we realized that we're already a month later, already a month later than we were last year when we issued those. And so, we don't want folks kind of hanging out there in the wind and wondering if they've got continued employment with us, and we certainly don't want to lose any of our valued employees. So, we went ahead and issued the, the new letters and contracts. But, once we've presented to the Board, to you Board members, our proposed budget for next school year and to include the salary increases, and once, you know, hopefully that is approved by the Board, we'll go back then to our employees with any amendments to their contracts and that. But, we again, just wanted to allay any, any concerns about continued employment, even as we continue to do the really hard work to model out and forecast and ensure that, that we can go as far as possible with, with the offer of salary increases. And now, tonight, Board members, we are going to recognize a true hero. Mr. Willie Ringo is a fifth-grade teacher at Walton Elementary School. And I want to read you a commendation that we're making to Mr. Ringo. "On April the 28th of 2023, towards the end of the school day, a speeding vehicle entered the school zone in front of Walton Elementary School, causing a head-on collision with another vehicle and hitting two more cars in the pickup line for Walton. At the same time, Mr. Ringo, a fifth-grade teacher, was helping students to get their proper vehicles, or get to their proper vehicles. He bravely pulled a student out of the way of an oncoming vehicle despite the potential danger to himself. While the student did suffer an injury to her foot, Mr. Ringo's quick actions clearly saved her life. I, along with Chief Charles McInnis, our Executive Director of Campus Enforcement and Emergency Management, were honored to recognize and commend Mr. Ringo for his heroic and life-saving efforts. Please join me in applauding Mr. Ringo, a remarkable teacher and an exceptional human
I know, like reading a magazine. It's not that people read magazines anymore.
Just everyday people out here saving lives. Thank you, Mr. Ringo. Appreciate you. And lastly, Board members, I'm excited to celebrate some pretty remarkable young people, the incredible Jim Hill High School baseball team. We'll ask the baseball team to come on up. We're recognizing them for their accomplishments this season. At this time, Jim Hill Principal, Mr. Bobby Brown, will join us to say more about these
Good afternoon to the established leadership, families, and friends. I have the honor and privilege to introduce to some and present to others our Jim Hill High School baseball team and community. I would first like to begin by recognizing our leadership and our athletics. Our Athletics Director, Jacqueline Ross, will you please stand to be recognized for what you do to support our, all of our teams? Thank you, Coach Ross. Also, come on up, Coach Ross. I mean, you know, you lead it all, so we're not going to hold you back tonight. Also, I would like to, Coach Elton James, second-year coach at Jim Hill High School, Coach Samuel Buchanan, Coach Buchanan has been with the baseball team for five-plus years now. Also not with us is Coach Kevin Goss. Coach Kevin Goss has been a person who's dedicated his time to Jim Hill High School baseball without paying for the last four seasons. We have one slot for an assistant coach. Coach Goss sees the need, and he comes out faithfully to participate in the volunteers' time. So, kudos to Coach Goss in his absence. But, before, it's a group of young men that, on a daily basis, exemplify the spirit of having positive relationships, excellence in the classroom, and growth mindsets on and off of the field with a combined grade point average of 3.25. This season, we were fortunate to compile a regular season record of 12 wins, six losses. Six games were canceled due to the lack of facilities availability and weather. But these young men weathered the storms, weathered the lack of the facilities, and really put together a remarkable season that all of us at Jackson Public Schools can be proud of. We have not had a baseball team in over the past 20-plus years to reach the second round of the Mississippi High School baseball playoffs. They met a team in Oxford Uni-, uh, from Oxford, Mississippi, and the county school there, we had a really, really good showing, and I'm proud of our young men for how they played, the resilience they've had throughout the season, and their willingness not to give up in that game, to play a complete seven-inning ballgame with the final score being seven runs to our two runs in our loss in the playoffs. So, we're proud of them for showing that good Tiger pride and that Jackson Public School strong spirit. All the young men, and this upcoming season, facilities available, that our kids are planning to have a full 28-game season, which is typically not done in our school district with our athletes, but we have the manpower to have a full 28-game season, and that's our plans for the upcoming school year. Before I recognize the young men individually, they have a, an army of parents that it doesn't matter where we are. It could be here, it could be in Oxford, it could be in McComb, it could be in Port Gibson. Many of them, all of them have professional lives and responsibility, yet they still find the time to prepare meals before each ballgame. They travel around the team. So, parents, will you all please stand to be recognized at this particular time? Thank you all so kindly. So, as I give you, so, to take you coaching, it would be so kindly to give it to the young men. The great thing about this team, we have one senior. So, we plan to make a really strong run next year in the Mississippi High School Athletics Association baseball season. The lone senior, Arby Thomas, has received the baseball scholarship to Tubaloo College. And, and, and next year, we, we're expecting many more. Now, for our freshman, Jakarius Wilson, Jakarius Wilson? Junior Blake Bostick? Junior Jaken Williams? Junior Quentin Bradley? Junior Braylon Jackson? Junior William Merritt? And Junior Zakari Jones? Oh, sophomores? Oh, oh, okay, junior, that's what I thought. And then sophomore, Kendarius James?
Ay yi yi, imagine what next year is going to look like. Those teams better look out, huh? Better look out. I, um, you know, I'm not averse to talking smack, so, you know, we'll see, we'll see. With that, thank you again, Mr. Brown. Appreciate your, your leadership, appreciate the Tiger family. Thank y'all for coming out in force to help us to celebrate these amazing young men. You all simply, you make us proud, and thank you for, and I appreciate the highlights of not only what you've done on the baseball field, field, yes, diamond, field, but also, clearly, I didn't play baseball, but also in the classroom. And I'd greatly appreciate you naming both of those. These are scholar athletes who are getting it done. These are scholar athletes who are getting it done already. We're seeing some scholarships coming through. I can only imagine we'll see more along with the wins. Wins are good, too. So we appreciate all of it. Congratulations. And with that, Dr. Sevak, board members, that concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Green. And again, let's all give the Jim Hill parents and students and athletes a hand as they leave. All right, board members. I'm gonna ask Attorney Turner, I believe we have one public comment, and it's gonna be taken up in executive session.
Yes.
So, so we will do public comment in executive session. Board members, Board Member Reports. We have an occasion to commemorate tonight, board members. Tonight is the last board meeting of Dr. Robbie Luckett. And so, wanted to just take a moment to, I'm actually gonna invite you to make remarks, Dr. Luckett, just to reflect on your experience. And board members, if, if you wanna share some things after Dr. Luckett, I'm gonna invite you all to make remarks as well.
Well, thank you, Dr. Sevak. I was not prepared to make remarks tonight. I kinda thought this would go under the radar. You know, six years ago, we came on to this board at a moment that was pretty tumultuous in this district's history. And we had an entirely new board. All of us came on together with zero experience. And we were welcomed into this staff and community and school district with, with open arms. And the, the spirit of this community really motivated me to, to do, to be a part of this family. And I'm deeply grateful for that experience. It's the most important civil service I've ever done. And I'm deeply proud of the work we've done for the last six years. It is remarkable, if you think where we were facing the possibility of state takeover in 2017 and where we are now, where we are going as a school district. And the work that has been accomplished, I'm just very proud of it. And this district is well-positioned to achieve great things, and I can't wait to see it and see what is to come. You guys are ready. This district is positioned, you've got a leadership team in place that is remarkable. Hiring Dr. Eric Green is the best thing that we did as a school board, and I'm deeply proud of that decision. And the, the results and the ramifications are very clear for this district. So I'm proud of it. I'm proud of this service. I'm a product of public schools in Mississippi. My children are in public school. I teach at Jackson State, a public university. The students I serve are products primarily of public schools. I believe in the power of public education, and I think equitable access to the highest quality education possible for all children is the number-one civil rights issue of our day. And the fact that I've got to spend six years doing it as a part of this team and this board and this family has been incredibly meaningful. And I am grateful for that and for all of you. And I will always be a member of Team JPS and be one of the biggest fans here. So I'm grateful for that, and yeah, it's, you know, someone else can come and, and continue the work we've started. And, you know, to all things, there's a season, and this is it for me. So I'm grateful for that. I'm leaving with a full heart. Thanks.
All right. I don't believe that you didn't prepare those remarks. Those were pretty good. Board members, any, I invite any board members to share any comments as well.
Glad to see that.
Yes, Dr. Hairston.
I just have to take a deep breath here, and I am so sorry that I am not at this board meeting because I knew Dr. Robert Luckett when he was but a twinkle in his mother and father's eye. So he has grown to be such an incredible man and has done so much good work. I, as a fellow board member, truly will miss his wisdom and calmness and just everything, Robbie. So maybe I'm trying, not able to attend tonight because I'll probably end up crying right now. Good luck. See you soon.
Thank you, Doc. That's really meaningful. I will also say that Dr. Harrison recently intervened with my mother to try to get me to stay on the school board. So she was trying to work the back chairs.
I'd just say to you, Dr. Luckett, that stay strong and keep up the great work in the fine tradition that you have exercised on this.
Got to, got to see that.
One second, Ms. Hilliard. Mr. Figures is speaking.
And I, too, was one of the green ones, and I still feel green on this board.
I think Rossman has me muted, Becky. Do you have me muted?
You're not muted now. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Figures.
Ms. Hilliard?
Okay. Am I coming through now?
You are, very clearly.
Merely? Okay. Well, I think it's very quick because I feel like cheating it. I'm a bit overwhelmed with emotions, you know? It has been such a joy working with you, Robbie. And I really hate to see you leave because you brought so much to the board. I wish you much, much success in your future endeavors.
Thank you, Ms. Hilliard. That's very meaningful.
I would just like to say that, being the newest one on here, I didn't think you would be leaving this quickly. And just working with you has been a pleasure, and this board period has been a pleasure. You all welcomed me in like I've always been seated with you, which has been wonderful. And I've learned a lot, you know, from working with you all and working with you, Dr. Luckett in particular. I really appreciate just like the, the comments and everything that you bring to the table because I'm learning as I'm, as I'm continuing in this role as a board member. And I appreciate all that you've done for this board, even before I came on the board. All of you guys, this has just been one of the best boards I've seen with JPS in my history of working with JPS. And I, I know, me personally, I hate to lose you or anybody on the board, but I'm sure that you recommended somebody. But will come along and, and, and be, fill, fill your shoes, hopefully.
Thank you for that. There's no doubt that this board, the spirit of this board and the members of this board is remarkable. And I would put all of us up against any other school district in this state and just about anywhere else how much we care about this work, how much we're committed to it. And, and everyone here is doing it for the most selfless, absolute best reasons possible, and that is just a tribute to the people who are around this table.
All right. Well, Dr. Luckett, Robbie, I'll just say, I'm just grateful for the opportunity to work with you. Always, you showed up who you were every day. There was never any question about what you stood or why you supported something or opposed something. And it was always from, it always came from a, a, a place of values and equity. The, you, a lot has been said about the board, and I think it's worth saying that your presence made this work possible. The, the, just the clarity, the reliability. You all know I wear you out with phone calls, and you always took the call and showed up when it was hard, not just convenient. And, and so for all of these things, I'm just, I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity to serve with you. And, and I'm thankful to call you my friend as well. And so hopefully, I know I won't see you as much as I used to just because, you know, that's just the way it is. But I look forward to the next opportunity we get to do work together.
Thank you, Ed.
All right. Dr. Green, you want to say anything?
I would love to. Just very briefly, thank you, Dr. Luckett, for your service. People who have not served on a board, let alone a functioning board, an efficient and effective board, have no idea, no idea whatsoever the kind of investments of time and of spirit and of your knowledge and your networks, all the things that you all invest in this work, in the ways that you serve this district. People just, they can't have a clear picture of that. But I've had a front-row seat to this board, and I've, I've seen many boards in many places. And I've said before, and I say it again boldly, this is absolutely one of the best boards I've ever seen, and especially with a school district. And so thank you for all that you've contributed in so many ways, big and small ways. Thank you. Thank you for always thinking of our scholars with projects and opportunities and resources through your work. Thank you for being a thought partner. Thank you for pushing, even the times when we may have disagreed on a matter. Thank you for pushing hard and pushing us to think differently about various issues or items that we bring, and, and for holding us to a standard, but also holding yourself to a high standard. And so I appreciate you, and it's certainly bittersweet. But I appreciate all that you've given to Jackson Public Schools. And I'm sure the ways that you'll continue to be an angel on serving this district and this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
All right. At this time, I'm gonna invite board members, Ms. Williams, Dr. Green, Dorian. Yeah, you get up, you sit up here at the table with us. You gotta get in the picture, too, and Attorney Turner. So I think that's the way you would like it, right?
Yeah, absolutely. None of this works without Ross.
So I'm gonna read, so Dr. Luckett will be receiving a trophy plaque, an award. Thank you, Ms. Williams, for your help in getting it. And it says, "An appreciation of Dr. Robert Luckett Jr. for your years of dedicated service to Jackson Public Schools, 2017 to 2023, May 16, 2023." Let's give him a round of applause. All right. Okay, board members, it's only appropriate after celebrating the Jim Hill baseball team that we are going to get an update on JPS athletics. And I believe Coach Jones is here this evening, and I can't wait to hear your report. Coach Jones.
Can't wait to give it. All right. Board of Trustees, Dr. Green, welcome home.
Thank you.
Is it on? All right. Colleagues and Team JPS. Before I get into our report tonight, I would like to introduce the Athletic Department. First, we have Juan Nichols. Juan teaches at the Career Development Center, but he's working on our social media page. He's doing a very good job. We have Marquet Allen. Marquet Allen, he's just joined our district, I mean, joined our team with the Maintenance Department. And also we have Chad Dunson. Chad Dunson is the main, he's the manager at Hughes Field. So we built that very, very nice facility. So we have to make sure we have somebody to take care of it, and he's doing a very good job of that. We have Mr. Kenneth Green, Assistant Athletic Director. We have Mr. Chuck Worsley, Assistant Athletic Director. And the one that keeps everybody together is Ms. Ornette Purvis, our Administrative Assistant. We got a great team, and thank you guys for coming out tonight. When we talk about the athletics and activities, we wanna, definitely wanna commend the Jim Hill High School baseball team that was here. I mean, they were a picture of excellence. The, the last playoff game, I was, happened to be there from start to finish, and they really competed very well. Everybody would have been proud of them. The case for athletics, we'll go to our next slide. We, oh, I'm way used to somebody else doing this. I got it. All right. As our district, we built this presentation and everything we do. We take in mind, keep in mind our vision, our mission, and our core values. Our objectives for this presentation, we want to highlight some of the benefits of co-curricular activities. We want to compare this year's data to last year's data on scholar attendance, behavior, and course performance. And also want to share our plan and next steps relating to creating a more quality athletic program. Some of the benefits of, of co-curricular activities. Number one, activities support the academic missions of the school. Number two, our athletics, I mean, athletics and activities are inherently educational. Number three, activities promote scholar health and well-being. And number four, activities and athletics foster success in later life. A few of the accomplishments of the '22-'23 school year. We, as you see, we have several accomplishments, and I, I won't go through each one of those individually. But those are state accomplishments. Those are not, those accomplishments are at the state level, not at the district level. All right. Athletic and activities offered, it's pretty much the same list as we had last year, but we're looking to add bowling, girls and boys bowling. Mr. Kenneth Green is spearheading that project in the spring of 2024. So we've been meeting with bowling allies, finding coaches and finding practice places. So Mr. Green is spearheading that. And archery, Mr. Chuck Worsley is spearheading that project. So we, we've been out to an environmental learning center. We have some materials already there. They were already there for something else, I don't know. But we, we have some archery equipment, and we're gonna put them to use this spring. And once more, we're looking to add quality program and not just quantity. We don't just wanna say we have a program and it not be functioning at the highest level. So we want to make sure that when we add program, and it is quality program. Okay, some of the meats, meat and potatoes of this presentation. We want to look at some data as far as participation rates. If you look at, on the left, you have 2021 and '22. On the right, you have '22-'23. We have a, maybe, the percentage is exactly the same, the numbers. We have a slight decline of athletes and participation. So what we, we'll highlight some other areas later on in the presentation of what we plan on doing about that. Our goal is to get that number to 50% by the '25-'26 school year. Now, this is a slide that we are very excited about, the discipline of our athletes as compared to the entire student body. We see last year, we were at 20% with 609 discipline referrals. This year, we're down to 462 different, discipline referrals with a 12% of the entire student body. Our ADA, once more, our ADA, we increased a little bit. Last year, we were at 90% average day attendance with those students that participated in athletics and activities. Now, we're at 92%. So we're excited about that increase. All right, our GPAs, athletes' GPAs, last year, we were at 2.87. This year, we're at 2.85, so we're pretty much the same. We have to work, continue to work to get that up. And we have some other things as we outline later on in the presentation to get that up. Athletic facility improvements, I just want to briefly mention Hughes Field. Everybody, we had the grand opening at Hughes Field a few months ago. I just want to share with the board members, it has been open every day just about since we did the grand opening. I mean, we have track practice there, we have track meets there. We hosted nine track meets this year, including the North State Track Meet. So we're excited about the facility, and we are putting it to excellent use. The game plan, this is what we're looking at doing to get to the level that we want to get to. Want to increase the number of scholars, as we just talked about, by, to 50%. Right now, we're at 26. Number two, we want to develop intramural sports programming for elementary and middle and high school scholars. So every, we have realized that everybody's not going to make the varsity basketball team. Everybody doesn't want to play football. So there are some other activities that our scholars can participate in, so we want to give those scholars who don't want to make the full-time commitment to participate in varsity athletics, to participate in intramural sports. We'll implement a plan to assist coaches, ensuring that all athletes meet NCAA requirements, entry-level requirements, whether they choose to play college athletics or not. That's our goal for everyone that graduates and participates in athletics and activities. We want you, we want them to meet those entry-level requirements. We want to recruit expert coaches, directors, and sponsors who are passionate about developing our scholars. Also, we want to embed our athletic and activity program, athletic and activity periods, and teacher-coach schedules within the school day. We want to create ninth grade-only athletic teams, and we want to provide ongoing professional development for our coaches. And we want to create a customized district evaluation instrument for our coaches and directors. Some of the evaluation instruments that we have now are primarily for our teachers, so we need something that's more customized for our coaches. Key takeaways from this presentation, as we can all see, our scholar athletes tend to attend school at a greater rate, they tend to have fueled behavior fractions, and they tend to have overall grades, overall better grades than their non-participating peers. We made strategic investments in our facilities, and we hope to be able to attain quality coaches, as well as keep our scholar athletes in the city of Jackson. We are looking to implement some of the recommendations that we just mentioned from our optimization committee that we formed last year to improve our overall programming and ensure more scholars are connected with athletic and activity and intramural offerings, rich athletic and intramural offerings. So we don't just want to offer program, programming, we want to offer quality programming. All right, that concludes our presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Coach Jones. Board members, any questions, comments?
I have one question, and that was in relationship to the 50% goal. How do you think you would reach that? Like, what do you do to attract the students to be in sports?
Okay, so we mentioned we want to add intramural sports and activities, and so right now, we don't have that. So for those scholars that don't want to make the commitment of being in a varsity sport, they can play an intramural sport. Our band programs, we definitely have recruiting, having quality band directors is the key. You know, you see the programs at Jim Hill now and at Mur are bursting at the seams, and those band directors are doing outstanding jobs. And what, and not only doing outstanding jobs at their schools, but Mr. Little is committed to JPS bands as a whole. So he has been working with us, doing some things over the summer with our A3 program, with our band students, and recruiting those students during the summer times, and hoping that they will stick with the band programs throughout the year.
I have a few. So you mentioned, first of all, thank you for the presentation, and I really appreciated the way you showed the link between outcomes that we all talk about a lot, almost always outside the context of co-curricular activities. And so I thought that the relationships you drew were powerful.
Yes, sir.
A few questions. So you mentioned recruiting of coaches, and how do our salaries or our stipends stack up relative to other coaching opportunities in the metro area?
We did have a bump in supplements two years ago, which put us in the ballpark. We're still a little bit behind in that area. But at the same time, we would like that to be a little bit better, but we want people that want to be here. And the range that we're at now, I think that it is a little less, but if we get somebody that comes to us, I think we will have longevity with them if they, if they want to be here. So most of the coaches we get that come to us now, they want to be here, and we're excited about them wanting to be here. But eventually, I hope we can get a little bit better off in the supplement area, but I know it takes time. We just can't go from zero to 100 at one time. So we took some baby steps about two years ago. So in a few years, hopefully, we can take a few more baby steps.
Great, thank you. On the intramural front, this may be more for Dr. Green. I know we direct, dedicate resources to after-school programming. Is, are we thinking as we're, as we're thinking about the intramural program, are we also thinking about resourcing it so that coordinators can be compensated? And especially given the direct, you know, the relationship drawn between attendance and discipline and those types of things, which are also associated with goals we seek through after-school program?
Right. I think it's a combination of both. Some stuff can, will need to be outsourced or having, I think we doing a lot of that in our elementary schools now. But at the high schools levels, I think we can use a lot of our coaches to work with our intramural programs outside of their season. So especially if it's embedded during the school day, the coaches are there anyway, so they will be available to work with those scholars that want to participate in intramural activities. And sometimes they find some diamonds in the rough, coach, I mean, players that can really help them on the varsity teams.
Great. What has the experience been with transportation? One of, one of my more frustrating experiences as a parent, mainly in middle school, not lately, was around, I remember a game had to be canceled because our bus was late. And obviously, for students, when something like that happens, it's, you know, it's a morale buster, at least.
Well, one thing that we've done in our, in our department, and I've talked to Mr. Williams, but not Ms. Harris, is, is being realistic on when the bus can get there. I don't want an estimated time. I want more of a narrowed-down time, and we can make those adjustments in the start time, and make those adjustments in the time that officials arrive. So what we've done is kind of moved back some of our schedules, especially our middle school games, to maybe six o'clock when we were planning on starting at 5:30. And that's just makes things work better that way. Because if you have parents that are at the game, and they're waiting, and the buses are not there, and you have officials there and all of that, so just move it back, and we just start at a later date, a later time, and we've done that this year, and that's worked out very well for us. Also, doing, we have some coaches that have gotten certified to drive buses. That's the, the goal that we would like to be able to accomplish in this district, is to have our coaches become certified bus drivers. So when our coaches can drive the buses, we have enough buses, we just don't have enough bus drivers. So a lot of times, when our coaches are driving their teams, especially in the metro area, that's an easy drive just to get from, to drive from Provine to Canyon, from Forest Hill to Vicksburg. That's, that's an easy drive. So just to get more of our coaches that certified to drive buses, we do, we did have some this year. I think at Lanier, they had about three coaches, and that eased their stress level tremendously. And also at Callaway, they had about three coaches to drive buses.
Great. How are we doing on facilities? So I heard in Mr. Brown's remarks, he mentioned weather and facilities. I know we should have the baseball facility online next year. Do we have enough, and maybe you can just run through, you know, do we have the facilities' capacity, those of the quality that we would want for our athletes to run the programs that we want to run?
The...
Facilities.
Okay, you seem to be talking about one, the Hughes baseball facility.
Do we have enough, do we have enough baseball facility space quality? And, because I know there's a big difference between the field out on Lakeland and what's going to be down next to Hughes Field.
Right.
And so, and we have seven high schools running programs. Do we have enough capacity for baseball, similarly, basketball, football, volleyball, all the different? What was your overall assessment of our facilities, and don't forget the swimming pool?
Gotcha. Okay, all right. Overall assessment is this, Dr. Sebag, first thing, I realize that we are an intercity school district, and I compare our facilities to other intercity school districts. I don't want to compare our facilities, our athletic facilities, to suburban school districts. So when I compare our athletic facilities to other intercity school districts, such as Memphis, Memphis, Miami, Florida, New Orleans, Louisiana, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, I mean, we are comparable. Now, can we get better? Absolutely, we can get better. Now, as far as the baseball fields specifically, we, we have one field that's owned by the district. We will have to continue to use Smithwills and the other parks as well. But what we will have to do with that facility is, is just, pretty much just like Hughes Field, it's open all, all day, every day. And we have to schedule times for our teams to use that facility. And we do have lights, which is a great thing. So it's, it'll be easy for a Provine which is close to that facility to go, to be there maybe at a 3:30 or 4 o'clock to start their practice, maybe 3:30 to 5:30, you know? And then Jim Hill to come over at 5:30 to 7:30. And maybe even, if need be, another team may come in for 7:30 to, I know we hate to hear it, 8:30 or 9:00. But that's what we have to do right now. And I think that, that, those are planned things that can be worked out because, and that, just in that example alone, scholars can go home, do their homework, do their studies, whatever they have to do, and knowing that they have baseball practice maybe at 7:30, and they can be back at the facility and to have their practice and go home after practice. So we're going to have to be very strategic in scheduling games, as well as scheduling practices for that baseball facility. But we will not be able to, not, we still will have to use the City of Jackson's facilities.
Which is, which is okay. It's just, I'm just trying to make sure that the absence of facilities isn't the reason that we've got to restrict programming. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, yes. The, and when you look at other, you know, you talked about the swimming pool, of course. We, we would like to have a space that we can call our own. And I think that whatever that space is, where it is, if you can call it our own, we can, we can put our mark on it. So I think that it's important that we find a space that wants us, because we've asked to be in some spaces, and we, I don't want, I never want to feel like I'm begging to come into a space to use a facility, because they're not going to treat our scholars right if we have to beg and cry to get in there. So we're working on some things. I talked to one of the assistant swim coach, well, we emailed yesterday, and she's working on some things with the City of Jackson as well, that if we can just have one of their facilities that we can take more ownership of, and fix it up and do what we need to do to have a quality facility, because there are a lot of pools around the City of Jackson that, to be honest, it's just not, it's going unused. So that may be a possibility in the future as well.
Okay, great. I appreciate all the questions. I want to push us, I appreciate the comparison of intercity school facilities, intercity school facilities, and I just want to push us to do better. I mean, because, because, I mean, the fact of the matter is, our scholars go and compete in those other places, and then they come back to our places and feel a certain way. Now, we're making, even since we've been on this board, we've made improvements. I mean, when I walk into the Coliseum at Forest Hill, that's as nice as a place to play basketball, I think, as anywhere in the state. When I walked onto Hughes Field, like, you know, I love the fact that we hosted North State for the track championship. That, that's phenomenal, and I can't wait to see the baseball field. And I think that's, you know, just as we continue to look at our strategic investments, as we think of the investments we need to make to keep scholars and families in the district, I think they're interrelated. There's never enough money, but I think the data shows that it's the type of investment that will, on which we'll get a return.
Right. And I think if, as long as we, the facilities that we have in place, we just need to properly maintain them, do regular maintenance on them, and we will keep them at a level that's going to be comparable to any school in the state. Hughes Field can compete with anybody, anywhere in the state. Now, we're not going to have seven of those, one at each high school. But the one that we have is first class. So that's, the baseball field that we have, that we will have in a couple of months, will be a first-class facility. So I think that we just need to focus on maintaining what we have and also strategically planning the practice times. So like, at Hughes Field, if you would come over to Hughes Field any day, and our facilities manager can tell you, we have, every track team throughout the city is there. I mean, all of them there at the same time, and they are practicing. And really, it's an advantage, because I may have a jump coach at Provine that's good at the, at the high jump. So he may work with the scholars from Wingfield, Callaway, all of them that do the jump. So I may have a sprinter's coach that may be, that may be a hurdler. This actually happened. We have a hurdler coach that ran track in college. So she actually helped the hurdlers from every school. And so that's an advantage of being in that, everybody being in that space at the same time.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Sebag, I'll just say, I appreciate the push. I absolutely, I want to name this, I absolutely appreciate the positive spirit that Coach Jones brings to this. brings to this and and helping all of us to make better use of the resources that we have. But I, but, I will use the word but, not and, but, I agree, we we do need more. And and so I want to continue to work with, as as Coach Jones is building our programming and developing the staffing and and building a groundswell of folks who are more and more interested in not just playing, but the discipline of preparing and developing skills and all that to be more competitive players. We want more competitive resources and facilities. And so nobody is assuming that that will just happen overnight, but we do need a plan to to develop those those facilities. So we'll, we'll continue to push on that front, doing, doing right by the face, facilities that we have, because that absolutely has been a challenge, not maintaining them. So we want to do that. But I I do want to commit to providing more resources, more facilities across the city so that we don't have the kind of bottlenecking at those premier spots and start to wear them down more quickly because they're in constant use by everyone. So, you know, everybody around this table knows the resources are going to be a challenge to make it happen, but hear from me that we absolutely want to provide more for our scholars. More on that. I I do have a, I do want to make a clarification, the 50% goal, really, really glad that you made that statement publicly to the people. I appreciate that, brother, thank you. 50% of whom, of our overall enrollment?
Yes, overall high school enrollment.
High school enrollment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because I thought that at first, but then when you included the intramural sports, I was like, well.
Well, we want to do intramural at the high school levels as well.
Right, no, understood. But I said, when you, when you included that, I said, well, maybe he's shooting for 50% of all our scholars in JPS, which would be, you're not trying to do all that. Okay. You know, clear is kind.
Yes.
As Dr. Cormac is quoted as saying. Okay, so that's one. And when will the Hughes baseball field be completed? Do you know?
I think it was September.
September?
Yeah.
Right, yeah. We're excited to get that online and do the ribbon cutting or whatever there. And then have you calculated, it's crazy that it's already been two years, but have you calculated what the next bite at increased stipends for our coaches might be? Do you have a dollar figure in mind?
Absolutely, I keep it in my pocket.
Okay, I was going to say, listen, I was, I was, there was a moment that I was getting afraid, it's like, if he doesn't have a dollar amount, that'd be problematic. Okay, yes, we should revisit it.
Absolutely.
I appreciate the question, and it's hard to believe that it's already been two years since we did that, but we we should re-up that conversation.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I have one other question, and that is in relationship to the, like, middle school students going into high school that may, so I know that when my children were there, they were able to run, they were at, at Whitten were able to, or at Bailey, and were able to run with Wingfield's high school cross-country team because they don't have cross-country at the middle schools. So is that still the case, like, with other sports, like, if they don't have it offered at their middle school, are they able to participate in their feeder pattern high school?
That is correct.
Is that communicated to parents where they can know that? Or how is it communicated? So that parents and families could take advantage of that?
We have communicated that, but I will be the first to say that it's, there's a gap there. Some coaches communicated very well, and some coaches do not communicate very well. And.
Do they not want to work with the middle schoolers?
I wouldn't say that, but it's just not as convenient. Yeah, yeah, I would say that, but it's not, I I guess it's just a little bit more challenging, not impossible. And it's even for the parents, because.
It's a challenge.
It's a challenge for the parent.
But it is a commitment, and if, if a parent is willing to make that commitment, it has to be communicated upfront from the coaches and the schools and principals and everybody, all parties involved, that this is something that I am willing and committing to do.
Right.
Some parents would definitely do that for their children and their scholars, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just, you know, that, that's another way of, and it starts early.
Yes.
Really early on, because even when, because as a feeder pattern, they go up and they're excited to be able to get on the big team eventually, you know, and it just keeps them in school, keep them motivated, keep them ready, like, I'm, I'm going to Wingfield, I'm going, I'm going to be on this baseball team.
That's right.
You know, if they don't have a baseball team at their middle school.
Correct.
That would be something amazing.
I think we can do a better job of communicating that. I really do. Some, some parents, but I I really think more than anything, it's a transportation issue. And because if they get out of school in middle school at 3:30, high school practice may begin at 4:30 or 4:00. It's just getting from Peoples to Wingfield.
I understand. It's, it was just definitely a challenge, but it was, it was very, very worth it.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Coach Jones. All right, board members, next, we're going to move on with our information-only items. We have the review of amended agreement between Jackson Heinz Comprehensive Health Center and Jackson Public School District. Ms. Amanda Thomas will present the information.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Sebag, board members, Superintendent Green, as well as colleagues and community members. The administration presents to you an approval of an amendment to the memorandum of agreement between Jackson Public Schools and Jackson Heinz Comprehensive Health Center. The purpose of this agreement is to continue the established and guided working relationship between Jackson Heinz Health Center and Jackson Public Schools District. Jackson Public, Jackson Heinz Comprehensive Health Center will extend medical and dental services to 21 additional schools listed in the executive summary. That includes two additional school-based centers, which will be located at Blackburn Middle School and Cardozo Middle School, as well as 12 elementary, three middle schools, four additional high schools for mobile-based unit services. Previously, Jackson Heinz Comprehensive Health Center served 13 schools with four health centers, and so we're moving from 13 schools to serving 34 schools total within our Jackson Public School District. Through the years, Jackson Heinz Comprehensive Health Center has serviced and provided more than 14,000 services from the contractual period of 2019 through 2023. So I wanted to add that as well. And any of the schools that were listed, specifically Isible Elementary and Beacon Park Elementary, those scholars will be receiving those services via the mobile unit. Isible, their school-based unit will continue to be operating, using for Jim Hill High School scholars.
Great, thank you, Ms. Thomas. Board members, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to our information action items. We have the, first up, will be Attorney Moore, who will present the request to approve an addendum for the Year Three with Inside Education Group and Teacher and School Leader Grant Implementation, also known as Project Ignite. Attorney Moore.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Sebag, board members, Superintendent Dr. Green, and our JPS family. The administration is requesting for information action approval of the contractual agreement between Inside Educational Group and Jackson Public Schools for the Teacher and School Leader Grant Project Ignite Implementation. To give a brief recap of the project, there were one-on-one coaching sessions for planning and reflecting on the IOT practices. Videos of IOT and the step meetings were submitted to coaches for feedback. Coaches attended the IOT and step meetings being zoomed to give feedback on implementation in real time. Virtual coaching for classroom teachers was provided consistently for 25 teachers across the district, and growth was seen in both teacher practices and student performance based on the data shared with the coaches by those teachers. Principal and lead teacher coaching will continue to include a narrow focus on developing long-range traction plans that will help each school implement and measure the progress of the district-focused areas and initiatives. New principals who are in Ignite schools will be provided with the IOT and step training and coaching for principals, assistant principals, lead teachers, instructional coaches, and district-level support teams will be provided to ensure continued progress and support for the implementation of the IOT and step practices. Recruitment and retention support will continue to complete the state survey and creation and implementation of school-level onboarding teams. The report will be shared with JPS decision-makers and used to inform recruitment and retention strategies for the 23-24 academic period. The purpose of this agreement is to implement Project Ignite, and Project Ignite again is the collaboration with the Inside Education Group in order to improve student achievement, teacher and school leader efficacy, and to create sustainable systems.
Thank you, Attorney Moore. Board members, any questions, comments?
IOT.
Is there additional? No? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve? Dr. Harrison has moved, Dr. Luck has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you.
Dr. Sebag, I'm sorry, IOT is Instructional Leadership Team, and step is Step Professional Learning Communities.
Thank you. Was that the?
Those were the acronyms that I was.
Yes.
Excellent, we appreciate the guidance.
Alphabets.
All right, well, next, we'll invite Mr. Burke up to present the financial report.
Good afternoon, President Sebag Board, Superintendent Green, JPS family who have stuck around. I have the pleasure of presenting to the board the financial reports for the month ending April 30th, 2023. The administration recommends that the board approve the monthly financial reports for the month ending April 20, April 30th, 2023. You do have a copy of the monthly financial reports containing the Statement of Fund Balance Budget Status Report, the Bank Reconciliation Report, District Maintenance, District Maintenance Cash Flow Report, and the highlights from that, from that report are as follows. From the Statement of Fund Balance for the General Funds Sections Funds 1,000 through 1999, referencing Page Four, the preliminary ending fund balance as of April 30th, 2023 was $25,164,562.60. This is $3.4 million higher than it was in our previous prior-year position at this time. District maintenance revenues are higher than expenditures by approximately $2.7 million. And in referencing Page Seven of the report, Sixteenth Section Revenues Year-to-Date, we've collected $760,000, which is about 89% of what we budgeted for this year. Special Revenue Funds Section Funds 2,000 through 2999, these include our Child Nutrition Funds, which we continue to reference on Page Six, we continue to carry a nice little balance there that we are, we're planning to spend throughout the summer on new equipment to be placed in our school cafeterias for the upcoming school year. The Title Funds Section, the Corona Response Funds, IDA Funds, and other special revenues all make up this group. We do have several special revenue funds that have negative balances at this time to the tune of about $8.8 million, and we have currently drawdowns pending of about $5.12 million in drawdowns that should come in over the course of this next, next month. I will remind you that we have closed the gap to, within $3 million per month. We started the year with a much more, a much larger gap in that drawdown schedule. Budget Status Report, referencing Page 12, as of April 30th, 2023, we have budgeted at this point, $42.5 million in our residual fund balance. Revenues collected this year, we've collected actually $162.5 million, which is 86.3% of what we budgeted. We've expended in district maintenance funds, 84% of, 84.8% of what we expected to expend, which is $159.8 million. Other funds, this is all of the other funds that make up our district budget, we had budgeted $301 million, we have actually collected in revenues $114.8 million, which is 38.1% of what we budgeted in all those other funds, and we have expended of the $343 million that we budgeted to expand, we have actually only expended $128.4 million, which is 37.3% of what we totally, what was totally budgeted in those funds. Our overall budgeted revenues for this year was $489 million. Our budgeted, that's revenues, and our budgeted expenditures was $532 million. Of that actual total, we have actually collected $277.3 million, and we've spent $288.2 million. And the bank reconciliations, our bank reconciliations are up to date, referencing Page 23 through 25. As of March 31st, 2023, all district accounts are with board-approved depositories, and bank statements have been reconciled appropriately and promptly. Cash flow report, as of April 30th, we had an ending cash balance in our account, District Maintenance Account, referencing Page 27, of $11.3 million as compared to last year about this time, we had $13.6 million. So that is a $2.3 million decrease based on our prior-year position. And then finally, some headline indicators, we, our revenue collections again are ahead about $1.9 million versus what we've collected this past year. Expenditure, year-date expenditures in our present amended budget status, our personnel costs are about 0.1% more than what we spent in 2022, and our overall percentage of expenditures year-to-date is 0.79% of our amended budget at this time. But I would want to point out that our amended budget started out for personnel costs at $98.98 million. We have amended that budget down to $93.4 million due to tight controls and the fact that we've not filled every one of our positions. So we actually have saved nearly 7.4% and reallocated those funds across other things to more targeted needs. So there's that. So there is the financial report. I will, as always, entertain any questions, comments, criticisms that may exist.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Board members, any questions, comments? I have one. On the, there's the first number, I think, one of that you read, $3.4 million district maintenance, I believe, fund balance.
Yes, sir.
Should we plan on, is, is part of the planning that that will roll to next year and that we'll use that to, as basically bridge financing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're hopeful. At this point, we still have May, April, May, June, and then the, what we call the old July payroll, which will be the payroll, the, the final check for teachers for this year. So we're still hopeful at this point that that number will hold throughout that period so that we will add to our fund balance.
Okay. And then we'll use that to budget for next year as we continue to build the budget that aligns with the anticipated revenues based on enrollment and other anticipated sources.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, board members, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Figures has moved, Ms. Thompson has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Thank you.
All right, next, we will move on to our Consent Agenda Items for Finance. All the Consent Agenda Items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we have had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Finance?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Thompson has moved, Dr. Harrison has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Next, we have our Consent Agenda Items for General. All the Consent Agenda Items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda for General Items?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luck has moved, Mr. Figures has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Uh, next, we have the Consent Agenda Item Personnel. All the Consent Agenda Items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Dr. Harrison has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Thompson, Mrs. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries. Uh, board members, I believe there is a consideration for executive session. Is there a motion to close the meeting to consider executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Mr. Figures has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
You've been watching the Jackson Public School District Board of Trustees Meeting. To learn more about Jackson Public Schools and the vision for excellence in education, visit our website at jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, on Twitter at JPS District, Comcast Channels eighteen and nineteen, and YouTube at youtube.com/JPSITV.